The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What would you like to do with the warrant?
I believe it will be accepted as presented.
Thank you.
All in favor? On approval of minutes from February 20th?
If your motion is approved as presented.
Second, all in favor?
The next upcoming select board meeting is March 20th, 5:30 here at the Town Hall. Old business, discussion boundary line with that. Any updates that were aware of?
I think that the attorney is still working on it. I have not heard anything new on that topic.
Any other old business?
No.
Okay, we're gonna die already.
Well, I'm gonna... No.
Nope.
It's gonna be addressed later.
New business, meet with the Marine Resource Committee to discuss a possible special town meeting to correct an ordinance change. Do you want to start with that?
Sure. There was a new ordinance written up last year, and there's been some wording in it that is very... It's like only one word here, one word there, but it makes a huge difference as far as the ordinance is concerned and as far as people's licenses and living is concerned. It wasn't meant to be that way, but, you know, obviously the new lawyer or whatever who drew it up didn't realize that it made that much of a difference. So we want to be able to get back and change it before it's too late.
So is this INF?
Yeah, personally.
Basically.
And is my... So I... Because I think I was actually adding me... I know, I was telling you it's supposed to be not called a resident shellfish license. Resident is the key word that was left out of that phrase.
Yes, yes. And it's in several of the parts of ordinance that it needed to be added, not just one, but several.
So this isn't... Our new attorney hasn't looked at this yet. This was a previous...
This was previous.
In history.
This was the one we wrote last year.
So let me ask you a question. I agree with that concept. I think, should it be more detailed? And certainly it's up to the attorney, whereas the resident license should be in the town of your domicile, your permanent address. And any other non-resident licenses, you can only have one resident license, but it should be also explained a little bit further that it's in the town of your domicile. So that your... It's only for residents of West Bath will be considered resident.
Exactly, yes. So in other words, if we have a resident license in another town... This is the way it was supposed to be worded, but it was just worded as if we have a license in another town.
But you can't have a permanent resident license in that. You see that? So if you're gonna have a resident license in West Bath, you have to have a non-resident license.
Yes, sir.
Or you have to have a resident license in another town and have a non-resident license here.
Correct. But that's not the way it's supposed to be worded, so we have to add that word to it.
So I... And I'm happy that we're gonna have this conversation with the attorney.
We're troubled, and Julie did mention this. If we're gonna get this on a...
Yeah, this will tell you one timeframe.
Yeah. So it has to be a quick turnaround. It can't be something that takes hours.
Well, she needs to write the ordinance verse anyway.
But if she doesn't have time, I hope she does. I was saying, we need to make sure that somebody does this so that we can hear her time.
Are you talking about Julie?
No, no. We have to have the... Our town attorney is really important. So what is our timeline for if we have to have this sealed by the end of the last business day of March? So how do we back into the posting of the meetings for the town meeting? How does that?
We have a week between... A week from the time we post it to the time we have the meeting.
So we have to have this on Monday, March 31st is the drop date for this. And we are... Today's the 6th. So if we have a hearing, and this is have to have two, a hearing?
Yes.
So it's two meetings?
Yes.
For this. So we would have to have... And maybe we have the hearing on the 20th, the initial hearing? Proceeding our select board meeting.
Or we could do a hearing next week and then have the special town meeting proceed our 20th. Then it gives us a little more...
But we need... We need a little bit more time with the attorney to get the language. In theory.
I, you know, I mean, it's a matter of some extent, I guess. My thought is if we tell the attorney we need those documents and we go present it on the 13th, then it's a priority to get stuff.
David?
I would say the sooner the better. You don't want to go to the last minute and then have something change all of a sudden. Give yourself more time and go earlier.
And I don't think we've asked our attorney for immediate stuff too often. I think this is an exceptional...
And it's too words-ish. It's not like she's writing the whole... So I don't think it's gonna be a...
There's a... One comment is actually... I haven't seen the whole ordinance, so there's one other issue too that needs to be...
You only get one issue a meeting.
That needs to be changed. This is pretty easy. This is really easy, but on the...
You mean the number?
The ordinance that we're supposed to have our birthday on the application. And there was no birthday slot on the application, so we don't...
We have the wrong application. We're aware of that as well.
Okay.
So is there...
Can I have that?
So I believe the applications can be amended with our attorney. Is that... Do you know if that's the case?
I would imagine we would...
Because I think even the planning board, the applications for the planning board up to the planning board, they're not... They... Like you would make the application recommendation. It's up to you. The planning board makes their own applications. And then we will create... Is that all that's missing is the birthdate?
Yes, as far as this is.
On the current application?
Yes.
But it's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance. We have to have a birthday on it.
So I would say we should change the form to match the immediate adopted order.
Yeah, so right now they're penciling them in. They're just adding their birthdate to the application, which it covers it. But we're gonna... It's just we need to rewrite the application with an official birthdate request, isn't that?
Nothing to keep in mind, sooner the better. Any change is gonna be approved by DMR.
On the application?
No, on the ordinance change. It's gonna be approved by DMR.
Yeah, we're gonna change the ordinance, but it's gonna update the application.
No, they gotta change the wording, add resident.
We have to add resident or don't have a domicile. That's where I want that attorney.
So someone should check with DMR to move this process along.
Yes. Is the only necessary ordinance change the insertion of the word resident in section F, so it reads...
As far as your ordinance is, yes.
But there's some other things that are...
There are other issues that I wanted to discuss, but that's the big one.
Well, and so...
So should I contact DMR or your attorney?
Well, so if we're... Let's focus on what's critically important for April 1.
Okay.
If DMR has to approve it, let's give them the one or two word additions and nothing else is gonna stop what you want to... Because we're gonna be doing ordinance changes for the town generically. So we could... But I don't want to delay review if we put anything else in here that... Especially when we're talking about conservation. Anything, you know... There's a lot of things that I don't think that we should be changing or adding things.
That's the biggest issue right there. Anything else will iron itself out. It was another change where...
Well, looking at the... There's some significant language being added in some sections, and I don't want that to interfere with the approval by April 1. There's... Not that they may be able to get to it, but I think our best bet is to stick to a one-word edit in this request.
Okay.
Are you... I mean, I don't want... Because that's really what's most critical, isn't it, for us?
And it's the most critical.
And it's in four different places too.
That's what I was saying, apparently it's not just one.
But it's one word. It's just one thing. It's one word versus lines.
Just so we're on the same page, what is the other one that you want changed?
Okay. I guess it's E or... Okay, I don't know.
Section?
1F?
1F.
2...
Wait, 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 wait. We got the 1F.
Oh, no, probably the next one.
Okay, the next one down. 2... 2D.
So, oh, wait, we're EF, E1F. Where's 2D?
It's below the 1F. It's the next one down.
Not here. I've got section 10 violations. Not on our paperwork.
PD, what is?
Here?
Wait, but hold on, let's do it. I don't think we're looking at the same thing here. We're E1F. So that's the resident. We added that. Okay. D? So we don't have a 2. We're in section 10. We're in section 10 here.
Ah, see, but look, this is our ordinance that I was giving.
This is the one I was giving.
And then it's here, and it's here, on like all the different categories of licenses.
So I think what happened, this is our last page. I think we should be able to find it.
Yeah, so the redline draft that we have, I'm under the understanding is that's what passed out coming last year.
Correct.
Which is probably the document you have.
That's the one I was giving recently. I was going by the old one, because it was last year or whatever the year before.
Is this the old one?
This is why this... I think that's the old one. And that's why this...
This is the one I was just giving to on Thursday.
No, this is the new one, right here.
This is... Can I see your...
Yeah.
Sorry.
Suzanne, the one that we have, the one you're looking at, Julie printed these. The one that Warren has is the one I printed. I gave to him from our website.
But these... So this is the official one that...
Yes, it should be.
This is amended in August of '24?
No.
No mark the...
No.
Not at all. Because if you go through this, what we have, the one change is all that would need to be done.
Right.
That's why we're looking.
That's where the screw-up is.
Okay, so...
I've got it highlighted.
Can I keep this?
You sure can.
So the highlights are where you need to.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just gonna...
Pretty much, you can get...
So this one is...
No, no.
You need to change that one word.
I don't... It looks like it.
I did highlight a couple other things, but that lined itself out. One of them was the change of the license requirement for a new residential license. It's by a number of hours they put in for conservation work instead of by lottery if they didn't put in 12. That was changed. But that's... We don't have to worry about that right now. It's in the ordinance, so it looks like somebody's gonna get a license because they have more options.
Okay, here it is. Hold on, here it is. Section 1, 2, 3, 4. Oh. It's bleeding through. Okay, section 5.
Yeah, mine's bleeding through. Sorry, I didn't have a highlight. I had a yellow pen.
It word wrapped. Section 5, okay, here it is.
I know.
It's just a word wrapping thing. So here's section 5A, resident commercial license. So what are you trying to say in the commercial one? What did you highlight here?
What's my highlight box?
I have it right here now. This is what I have. What are you highlighting here you want me to see?
Oh, there's a bunch of stuff in here that I highlighted for the person that will probably obtain a license. The things that he has to... Like he can't have an offense on his record for a couple of years. He can't legally be a resident for one year. That stuff, I did highlight that too.
Okay.
Well, great, we haven't run, but I think what we're trying to do most immediately is find the...
Exactly. I wouldn't worry about that.
So that's in yours you highlighted, the word resident?
So is this what they're looking for?
I just...
Is this what they're looking for?
I just searched for the areas. I didn't force force it or needed to add a word or...
So it's section?
Don't bring it here.
We did that one.
Okay, now we can get...
Oh. So...
I'm not sure what you...
And you show me where it says it.
I agree, yeah.
That we did, that's F. That's this one F right here.
Okay.
The end of the word resident license. Okay.
And that's... Says the same thing, isn't it?
So is 2D means to say resident and not just say...
Those we're not gonna... All these sentences we're not gonna address right now. I think it's just the word. We're... Right, these, these...
Resident, resident, resident.
Yes, but not these. Not these full, just the word.
You got it?
We're not gonna do five or six.
I think I got it, though.
Okay, as long as you got it. I don't want to see anybody lose a license that deserves it, you know what I mean?
But I don't think you can just do those three because you've got...
They added, that's additional language. That's new language.
But it's also with the word resident, can we just add resident?
But I had already in there. So let me see. I need to see section 6. Section 4, 5, 6. Okay, section 6, licensing 1, 2. So... Yeah, this is new language. See, they put resident, resident, resident. So that's already in there.
And how about these two, the state town resident under 11 and 12?
They don't have residents to do...
The same thing, okay.
So these are... This is new language that I think we should stay away from.
Yeah, we don't even give out non-resident student licenses, so I don't even know why that's even in there, any of it.
And it's again here.
It says license of year will to any resident under the age of 18 for the purpose of having a saying shellfish.
For a non-resident?
No, we don't.
We don't do non-resident students?
Do we get non-resident?
That's what we do, though. It says you do, if you have it.
Well, the thing is, is well, if this is in there, it has to stay until it's removed.
Where did this redline draft that we have come from?
Julie, I'm not sure where.
I think these were the edits made to the ordinance last year. This is what was voted on. These are the changes from last year. Red, that was voted in.
Remove all reds.
No, these are officially in there.
Right.
I don't know. I would rather just add the word resident as an address.
Agreed. I'm just trying to get my head around.
They were adding it. So if we remove this stuff, it wouldn't help. Right. So what I'm saying is...
This is in here.
If...
Non-resident shellfish...
It would undo the purpose we're trying to do.
We have a non-resident recreational student shellfish harvesting license. License available to any non-resident under the age of 18 for the purpose of harvesting shellfish. So this is in here already.
I know, but you know what?
So that's...
This needs to be gone over. It's just...
This is what you gave it, and that was current on our website? So I think we send this up, which is current on the website, no redline, and add simply the word resident to EF and then to 6, 7... Section 6, item 7, 8, 9. Let me see if that's on here.
Okay, those four, those four are searching for the word resident.
Section 6.
Will we put this on April 1st?
Section 6.
My concern is, if we don't have non-resident student license, why don't we just get the attorney?
It's in here. It's already in here. Resident rec... 7, item 7, 8, 9, right here.
But we need to send her a form that has all of this correct, not half of it.
That's...
It's two different forms.
This is the same thing.
This is what was proposed. This is what's been put into effect. This is the current from last year.
This is not in there, and that's not in there. We need to make sure she has a correct one, not pieces from this. Sorry.
I was sure DMR is not going to require a standard ordinance that there be a non-resident student. That it's not a DMR requirement, not a tractable requirement.
We are not sure of anything. I confess.
Kathy, we've done everything. I think it's...
I am saying everything is to be on one hit, one second to go to the attorney.
That is not... Right. Look, 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 one second. That is this page. That's the beginning.
Right, but I think we just get this...
I'm guessing that Julie gave us what the change was.
Saying this to the attorney with all of his stuff. I'm just afraid we'll get some extra stuff.
No, it's clear. It'll be this. It's... This shows E licensing requirements. If we just add the word...
But that's not the thing, Suzanne. It's get one form.
Add the word, so we're not sending both of these.
If we have that in a Word doc, if it's redlined or a Word doc and we want to insert resident, send up to the attorney. I can't pass information to approve it by this.
This is where we have to do it. Resident.
And I'm not just do that. I just don't want to give her two that comes back with it and worry where we started.
Let's keep it the same way for the next few years.
This is all that we need to send to the attorney.
You got 1, 2, and 1, 2, you talked about 1, 2, 3, 4.
There aren't... These are in. These are already on this document. So these are... On this page, we just need to add that word. Did that work for you?
Do you need you to talk to DMR?
I can talk to DMR.
Is that...
Unless you feel the lawyer out of possible.
How would we have the attorney, I guess?
I mean, if she's gonna... She wants to make sure what's in and what's not.
Can you... Is that what you're most concerned with, those two words right there?
Yes, yes, definitely.
Is that what you're concerned about next?
Yes, yes, but I mean, yeah.
I mean, that's the biggest issue right there.
That pertains to April 1st.
Right.
Tonight, it's gonna be a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. All the changes were resident four places. If we don't go to DMR, how much trouble are we in?
Resident.
I don't know.
I don't think...
For jail, yeah.
I'm just wondering.
I don't know. I really couldn't tell you.
It's not worth risking.
Is that worth it?
I can't imagine we're gonna get tied up or...
Because, you know, you're gonna get some, and I don't want to say idiot, but that's what they are. They grew up here in Iowa. They're gonna go out and they're gonna work, if they really want to, they're gonna work hard. That's what they do. So that's why we're doing this.
But I think if we send and just add to say a resident license, I don't think that's gonna throw DMR off. We sent, this is our current ordinance.
It should be asked.
And we just say, this is our current ordinance. We need to expedite this because of April 1st.
Dave?
You've got to check with DMR. That's the way it's written. Any ordinance change has got to be approved by DMR. You don't want...
It's gonna go to DMR.
It has to go to DMR.
It's going to, it is.
And it should be a town official or the lawyer that does that.
I have no problem. I'll connect with the attorney tomorrow, tell her what we're looking at. Can you send this to me as a word wrap now?
Yes.
I'll put this in a red edit. And then if I... And I'll try and call DMR if I...
No, let the attorney call DMR.
That'd be my suggestion.
Not that way. Have I... Let the attorney... Ask the attorney if she...
If she...
Yes, yeah. They have some time to do that.
I don't know who this is, but I'm gonna keep it.
Suzanne, can you read what the changes are?
Interesting.
I got it later.
Absolutely. So it's... There's two, I think.
Right, if you can keep it. There's some of the stuff that I just circled and I don't really...
I'm just gonna... This is just...
...concern anything.
This is just so I know what I'm gonna tell the attorney on this page. That's all. We're just... Applicants, right now it states applicants must not hold a shellfish license with another municipality. It's gonna be changed to applicants must not hold a resident shellfish license with another municipality. Everyone comfortable with that? All good? Okay.
And someone change it?
No, those are in there. It's all in there. That's the only thing we're gonna change.
Yeah, so I will go ahead and make a motion that we hold a special town meeting on March 20th with a public hearing on March 13th regarding the official ordinance title, the Marine Resource Conservation Ordinance.
Where's the March 13th? Can we get?
We have to... Yes, both are here.
Okay, is that like 6 o'clock or 5:30?
5:30. We 5:30. And so the 13th is only for this, because we will have... This is essentially a hearing and then it'll be the meeting on the 20th will precede the select board meeting. I will not...
Well, explain the changes. Anyone who has any questions has the opportunity to ask them.
Yep, and probably the lawyer won't be able to contact DMR before the 13th, right?
We're gonna try. We're gonna do our best to get this addressed. We should know, when do we have to put this in the paper then? Where do the timelines have to be posted in the paper?
So it has to be a week.
Preceding the meeting?
Yes.
So we have to have DMR respondents. We can't do this without them. So the tentative plan is to do it on the 13th and the 20th. If we get delayed a week, it'll be the 20th and 27th. We have a week buffer to... If we have to push this out again.
I will remind you, you have to call them two or three times. I tell the DMR lot.
Is there someone in particular that you've talked to?
No, I usually do. I do the waterfall.
The attorney, they have a lot to do.
Yeah, I could be as much.
Are you comfortable with me reaching out to the attorney tomorrow with this? Okay, so you made a motion. I will second that with the one premise that if we don't... That we bump everything by a week if we don't hear back from the attorney. Or do you want to amend your... Just to keep it on track? We don't have to come back and vote on it again?
Yeah, the only risk for that is we may have to advertise twice.
We won't advertise until we hear from the attorney. We should...
Well, we gotta advertise on the sixth, right? Because it's gonna be a week before the hearing. So we...
Today's the 6th. We can't even make it.
I will draw my motion. I'll make a motion that we hold a special town meeting on March 27th with a public hearing preceding the select board meeting on March 2.
Okay, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yes.
That was a lot worse.
This is still our end of time record published Friday's opening.
Okay. For that day anyway. We're still putting out two weeks. We're getting enough notice. Okay. I think we should adjourn.
Are we gonna... Can there be any other way we can address any other corrections that need to be done for the town meeting or something that's coming up?
I would only focus on what's significantly important for April 1.
Okay, although I realize that, but I...
We have another town meeting scheduled in May anyway.
Yeah.
Anyway.
That's what I was talking about.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the one we're doing.
No, not the special meeting.
I misunderstood.
Okay.
Yeah, I won't. Yes, we can... There's things... There's opportunities for this at a later date. I just want to make sure that we get...
Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
I have a committee appointment application for Christopher Stapleton. Who, like the select board, has been unanimously appointed him to serve as an alternate member of the West Bath Marine Resource Committee for a three-year term, beginning and expire immediately and expire on June 30th, 2025. Seconded? Seconded? All in favor?
You gotta do it quick before we change the one.
Right.
You ain't going.
And then we have two abatements. The first one being Nathaniel Hyde, revocable trust.
You guys?
Can we follow the Gallup meeting?
By the way, is that a new table? Because I don't remember sending that one yet.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. That's something you said?
No, no, you're kind of missing something.
Thank you. You're welcome to sit, we have plenty of open seats right now.
So Suzanne, you want to do the two certificate something?
Sure. Okay, well, we're going to, we're going to move forward. Thank you. Okay, so we have two abatements. The first abatement is for Angela Keating, account number 945, mat U18-009. The reason for this is the lot is unbillable and it was confirmed by the code enforcement officer. The old land value was $232,600. The new land value is $69,800. The abated land value was $162,800 with an abated tax amount of $1,334.96. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
All in favor?
Thank you.
We have actually another one.
Another one, yes.
Don't go anywhere.
I'm not going anywhere, but can I get those numbers if you guys...
Um, yes, is that working?
Yes.
We can make you a copy, right, and then we have to have to resign it.
I still think it's too high, but whatever.
You're welcome.
Yes. Thank you, I wish I could sell it for that much.
Indeed, uh, okay. So the next abatement is for Al, Angela Keating, okay Allison. Um, account number 1424, mat U18, lot 006. The lot is available as confirmed with the code enforcement officer. The old land value is $287,100. The new land value is $114,800 with the abated value of $172,300 and an abated tax amount of $1,412.86. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
Woo!
So let's sign these while she's here, because she asked for copies of this.
That's lovely, thank you.
We need to turn that on, because I'm not really going to warm up.
I can come back another day and get them. Whenever I go check.
We have a brand new copier that we'd love to get the first copy, just to fit out on it.
Okay, that's lovely. Maybe you're going to...
It's on, it's just warming up.
Oh, thanks, did you get your phone?
Hold on.
As I just...
Okay. Still needs the, um, tax collector's signature for official that you can, when you get your, when you bring your check in, we'll give you one with a signature. You have to buy, you have to buy the signature, the fourth signature.
Yes, that's quite all right. Is it warming up?
So that's, um, happening. I'm going to move on to the next abatement. We have Nathaniel Hyde, revocable trust, account number 996, mat U21, lots 023. Incorrect land classification. The old value was, land value was $564,000. The new land value is $364,400. The abated land value was $199,600 with an abated tax amount of $1,636.72. I move that we accept the abatement as presented.
Okay.
All in favor?
Here, cooking with gas.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, Mr. McPhee?
We have, we are trying to review a assessment system that, one, we know was rather inconsistent with. Property inspections, there are no rear photos. That is basic, the 101 assessing. It's kind of like you hire a painter, you expect them to paint the backside too. That problem's not going to go away. And it is not really effective. There is, there is virtually no consideration for ordinances, minimum lot sizes. There's just basic fundamental flaws. And I've seen towns blow up because of basic fundamental assessing flaws and I don't want it to happen yet. So you may be hearing what you don't want to hear, but it ain't going to go away.
Thank you, any other public comment?
I'll just say that I'm Todd McPhee, I'm your county commissioner representative, and I've been going around to all the towns that I represent and watching what happens and let you know kind of what's happening with us. Right now, you know, we're in the middle of the, uh, the budget cycle.
Any chance you're going to go down in that request?
That would probably be not, not a very good chance.
It got up significantly.
What's that?
Well, it just, it went up way more than we were expecting, to be frankly honest.
Good chance it might do that again, unless something really big happens.
But I guess...
Here we have, you have a lot of unfunded liabilities that they put off year after year after year after year. And sooner or later have to be covered. People are going to be retiring, we have, I think we have 15 people in the police department, the sheriff's department that are over 20 years, that are eligible for retirement. And I know that they, we haven't budgeted for some of their benefits that they will need if they do retire. It's always been kind of put off, or you've never really fully covered it. Um, we have a, the new cell towers will be a little bit of a technical problem because, uh, there's five, I think, that are running, we're going to have 10, and we're going to be paying for two sets of them until they're all online. So one goes online, we take one off. So we're going to end up paying leases on those probably for another year. The jail's a problem, or will be a problem with capital improvements that the jail will not be able to fund them. So the bond for the jail, this is the last year for that. So there'll be a little money left over next year to cover some of those things. There's a lot of bills that have been put off of the salary.
So there's...
That keep creeping up on us.
Well, my concern is we, we have a committee.
Right.
That meets, and I feel like nobody's heard from the surrounding towns. Like, you have us come to those meetings, you ask our opinions, and they disregard it completely. I really struggle with that, and I think it's, I really don't think you care what we have to say. I think you invite us to those meetings just for, to show good faith, and I'm really disappointed.
I don't think I invite you to the good faith thing. I want to get everything I possibly can, whatever we can figure out to either reduce it or find a better way to do what we're doing.
So, I mean, when you look at, um, the recent dialogues that's been happening in our federal government and the risk reduction, you know, the, the risk of reduction in money, maybe this is not the year to be committing to some of these things when we don't know.
Well, we've already, yeah, that's right.
Well, the, we, if the funds aren't coming, all you're going to do is hit the municipalities harder if you don't get the funding, and then, and then it goes to our residents. And we, you know, we already, I think the significant increases that we're seeing on the horizon, uh, and I, and, you know, deferred maintenance is a problem for everybody. Um, but with the, the, the true risk we have going on right now and the threat of reduction of, of benefits, I think that this is not the time for you guys to decide, well, we should probably plan for retirement. That's something you should have been doing all along, we're into the lump sum.
Correct, you're right.
But, but...
For 20 years.
Yeah, but you know what, now's not the time to say no.
I don't know when the time is.
I don't either, but I don't think it's what it sounds like.
I know, but we can see where, we can see where the problem's going to be, it's how we get there.
But, but it, truly...
What year do you think the problem's been materialized?
The first problem's going to start next year, for sure. Because that's when the, uh, maintenance of the jail will start kicking in.
But we don't have to do all of it.
We're not doing all of it. We're doing little chunk, little tiny chunks of it.
But it, but it's, but we, we haven't acknowledged what the loss of funding from the federal government may do to the, the state, the county and the towns, and I think that's a significant piece.
We're not depending on anything to come from that this year. So we're, we're pretending that that's not going to be there.
No, because we're trying to, the towns are funding it instead, and that's the problem.
That's right.
But we can't, you, you, we, I think it's not appropriate right now to put all of that now on the, on the towns when you're, when you're at risk of funding from the federal government, maybe you shouldn't spend as much. That may be the other solution. And I think that's something you guys need to go back and think about.
Well, we have to look at what's going to fall by, for sure.
Well, if the wheels, if the wheels falling off the jail, maybe you address the jail and stop there.
Right, we have a communication building that the roof is leaking. And it's been leaking now for about a sound bit, two or three years. And we put it off, and we put it off, and put it off. So I don't know how many five-minute buckets I have to put on there, but we have to fix it.
So the towns have the same issues.
We do, the towns have the same issues.
Right, everybody, everybody, whether, your home has the same issue.
But we spent our COVID money to best cover the town, the best we can.
Because if I have a leak in the roof, I got to pay for it. I'm not getting the tax figures money to do that.
Right.
That's the difference.
Well, and it, but I think, I think, you know, sometimes, sometimes you just have to make the difficult decisions. Sometimes you have to reduce personnel. That's not a pleasant situation to do by any means. And I think you guys have a heavy staff, to be honest as well. And those are difficult things that aren't pleasant but necessary. And I don't think we're addressing the financial needs of the towns that roll up to the county, and we're disregarding loss of revenue coming from the federal government. Now's the year to cut your budget and spend less, to be frankly honest. And I think it's, and, and we went up a huge chunk last year, and it's projected we're going up a huge chunk this year. And that's, to me, not good thought process for these, the state of Maine and the county. I really, I, I think that there's, you guys need to look where you can save versus not where you can spend, to be frankly honest.
My concern, Mr. McPhee, to be honest, we don't know how long I've done this, four or five years now, fed on that budget committee. And it, it doesn't feel like to me that you really want to hear from us. And, and that's the way I feel sitting at those meetings. The person who chairs those, I think she disregards some of our comments. I, I know it's a tough time, but at some point, if you feel and, and our knowledge that it's tough for the towns and how can we work on this together rather than we leave, you guys all sit together and you prove everything, even if all of us have said it's not a good idea. It feels like it's a rubber stamp, no matter what we say. And it's, frankly, I don't see the reason to have a committee when none of us would even listen to it.
Well, and it just, I mean, it would, it'd be a great year to cause an increase. It'd be so nice to just flatline for one year and, and let, let the towns catch up. Because we can just, we, we all have expenses too, and we, we've, I know some of the, you know, half kilo every budget stuff. We've reduced our costs in some departments because we need to for our residents. Our residents have spoken to us, they're concerned on how they can stay here in West Bath, and we need to listen to them. And in return, you need to listen to us and that same comment. And I, and I, I've not been in the meeting that Kathy shared, that, you know, to, to not be heard seems disrespectful. And, and it's a problem for our communities. And we, and, and it's, I know you, it's, you don't want to hear it, then I mean, you don't want to hear it, but it's, it's, we...
All I can say is this is my first budget, that first one.
That's fair.
But you know what, though?
I'm listening to everybody on, yeah, on everything going. So far, we haven't decided anything at all. Your committee has, you know, our committee has decided...
We have voted on nothing yet.
Right, you haven't done anything.
Well, we did last year, and everything we said no to was passed.
So it's, so, so you, you want to make it a really good first year, do what's right for the town. For all the towns, not just us.
I have to pay the tax too, so I'm going to say mess.
But, but it's, but I think if you could, if there's a way to find reduction versus spend, that, even if it's slight.
Right.
Just a slight reduction versus an increase, that, that is a message that shows that you're on our side. And it doesn't feel that you're on our side right now. And I'm not saying you, I'm saying...
I don't think it's going to be realistic to hold a county budget to zero or a decrease. It's not realistic, but there are certain places I know that the budget committee's going to propose cuts.
And my concern is we did that last year, and nobody heard us.
All we can do is make our choices known and vote. And our home meetings, what we believe is the best for the county.
But how can you do that year after year after year? At some point, you lose faith in the system and the process.
To certain degree, yes, but, um, this year, I'd say all we can do is take our votes, present our, our, our choices.
And I've got to be honest, I feel like in those meetings, it's gotten a little, how I want to say? It's not a very nice meeting, sorry. There's a lot of people, if you don't agree with this person's idea or that person's, it's getting pretty snotty.
I haven't seen that this year, so I don't know.
It's, you know, it's, it, this would be, not just with us, but I think with the entire county. A reduction in spending, and even if it's not across the board, but in some avenues, would go a long way for the community, if, you know, if we're, you know, and, 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 you know, it's, whom I say how, how it's wrong, but it's, there's been a couple of comments that you have significant headcount. You know, so that's, that's not, those aren't easy decisions, but sometimes it's the right decision. And I, and I, we need to find a way where everyone needs to say, how can we do better? And if there's, and if there's a way to get there, terrific, but we, we really need to look a little deeper into this process. So I think it's, 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 the spending seems to be out of control.
Just one other comment. I think people need to also realize what the county does. The DA is not paid by the state of Maine, the county's paying for that. The sheriff is not paid by the state of Maine, the county pays for that. Deeds is not paid by the state of Maine, the county pays for that. Probate, a lot of these county, unless you need that service, you don't know it's there. It doesn't affect you. But when you need that service, it doesn't affect you. And it's not just about, uh, cutting, you got to cut where it's sensible and needed.
I didn't say, yes, I agree with that. I'm not saying just cut generically. But I think that, you know, when, when, when you go into the meetings and, and Kathy, you know, and the committees put forward requests and they're ignored, that doesn't, that seems like you're unheard. And, and that's, we, we, no one wants to feel that way. We don't want our residents to feel that way, and we don't want to feel that way in return at the county. And I think, you know, and it's, it's, there's certainly some, um, financial uncertainty right now coming. Where, where, where is the money coming from?
Oh, I should agree with that.
And I, and I think the concern is, let's...
In the end, the commissioners would make the budget. They agree what's going to happen. I've never seen them push back all night. I think there is a little bit of room to show your...
Show good faith.
Yeah, and say, well, we don't need two more deputies and two more crews, and we don't, you know, maybe we can do a run-in here and just show a little good faith that you're trying. It might end up being $10,000, I don't know. But there doesn't seem to be any good faith. It seems like whatever you guys want, you're going to get, period.
Well, I, I don't know.
Well, too much gas, also.
Well, I was a Pittsburgher yesterday, so, I've been to Pittsburgh, and I've been to Georgetown, so it is...
And everybody's saying, I'm going to give you all my money.
Everybody has the same problem. And it's like, okay, you go back and you look it all over and say, okay, I, I have to keep the deeds open. I have to keep probate open, I have to keep district attorney open. Okay, now we're down to two nickels on the floor. Do I take that nickel or this nickel?
Well, so, and so, but even in the deeds section, you know, and I, and I actually was, I did some research on a couple of deeds. There's now a fee. There wasn't one before, so...
Yeah, there's always been a fee. It's okay.
Now on a cert, on an individual cert side.
Just a word on fees in deeds.
The fee is...
I know, they haven't changed those fees since, what, 1990? The state does not re-change...
So maybe that's the stuff we look at.
Right.
Right, so we're changing the fee for the deeds that get it.
It's 1990.
Up to date, across your opinion, you know, personally... Up to date, but plus you're still paying. You know, the person that uses the service is gonna pay more.
So I tried to search an H H, E 200, what's your, H H 200, right? For the Septic, I got our line, H H E, and there was a fee to look at it. That wasn't there before. I tried to pull a deed, and there wasn't a dollar fee for me to download it before. That's now the dollar fee to download it. So...
Haven't seen that. That wasn't a week ago.
It was three days ago. So, so, and maybe you take it to $2. You know, versus put the, you know, the, you know, people are, it's, there's...
The projected increase in fees we heard last week from deeds, the revenue the county brings in if, I guess, it passes, what they're talking about now, would double the revenue. If they include the new fees in next year, not this current year, but next year.
And the H H E 200 was anything older than, I want to say it was 2,000. So they, they started charging, there was if it was an older time, they charged, there was another fee. So there's, there's ways to recoup it and take the burden off of us.
How do you think we're gonna get creative in how we manage things? That sometimes it's very difficult. I mean, like the town of Wells now doing this beach cap.
Popping.
Yeah, I mean, it's not pleasant, but...
Yeah, you're reading every possible thing you can and try to find, or paying too much for copia. Every little thing. Is gas too much? Is fuel too much? Is propane too much? Is the lights too much? All of that stuff. You, you look at every ounce of it to try to get, I don't need a new chair. I can, I can live with a five-man bucket, so.
But you took the comfy chair. You should have one of the blue ones.
This is the only one, this is the only one available in the country.
But, you know, I'm also gonna encourage you to be creative. The private sector has completely revamped how we structure our offices. Maybe there's opportunities to go to four-day work weeks or something to that. So you save a day of people's...
Well, I know the probate, uh, what was that? Probate, uh, not probate, uh...
The register of probate.
Right, those two did go to pot town. $27 is what they went to, from 40 to 27. And that's what they wanted to do, so.
Yeah, but it's...
But it's all, you know...
The registry of deed had free people in when there was walk-in customers and you got paid for properties. There's a law on electronic now, and it's still free. So maybe two and a half would do it, maybe maybe.
And you're just, there's ways to, you know, and that's heavy in the headcount. You know, if you can start, each piece will, you know, the, the little pieces are gonna add up to a big piece. And we just need to figure out, like he said, be creative. You know, we're, I, we just, I think, it would mean a lot to not just West Bath, I'm gonna say to every, every person in the county, if we could pause increase and find a way to be creative. And I think there's, there's a lot, people just say it's, it's gonna take some time to get there, but it just, I'm, I'm very concerned with what our exposure is for federal revenues. And I don't want to dump this on the residents because we didn't get something. We need to plan for not getting significant revenues and reduce our commitment in other areas. And if we get more than we thought we were gonna get, terrific, we find...
Then next year, you're gonna have a little recovery.
But, and if we, and if we do get them, then we put another plan in place for the, the retirement for the sheriffs. You know, but right now, we need to plan for a lack of revenue.
And I think thinking of all those things, do we avoid more inmates at the jail? Is that a possibility? I mean...
Well, we just added 15 of the ICE people. So we're pretty much filled. You hold over 170, and then it turns into what category you are, whether or not you can stay there. We have several contracts. We've changed all of them and upped the price. We have an OBSCO, some in Oxford, some in Andes, all around, so, and they're all, they're all, they're buying beds. It's not, it's not by the person, it's by the bed. So if they have, if they bought 50 beds and they have 10 people, they're paying for 50. So all of this by-the-person thing is gone.
But, and that's where you have to, you know, that's, and that's getting creative. You know, you made a commitment, you wanted 50 beds, we've helped you for you. You gotta pay for them.
Right, and they don't help you.
But unfortunately...
Because they're saying exactly what you're saying. The other way around, they don't want to pay for it.
Unfortunately, the jails, a lot of the systems are 20 years old now. The cameras, the security, the automatic door locks. All those things need jump breakers.
We don't need door locks.
And the worst part, the county has nothing to say about it. If the jail needs these, the jail tells the county, we need the money.
Well, what happens is the state tells the jail, do you need these?
Yeah. It's, it's just, you know, the draw...
So maybe we need to disassemble the criminal system as much as we do the education system.
I mean, well, you're keeping guys in there a lot longer than, some of them, time served when they finally make it to, finally make it to court. So, yeah.
That eliminates the process then.
I mean, it's, that's a pretty tough setup, how that works, or how it doesn't work.
I just, you know, I think, and truthfully, this is not putting it at you personally, by any means.
Sure, Suzanne.
It's nice meeting you. But it's, I think it's, I just, I want, I want to do what's right for our community. And I, and I, and I, you know, and it's, I want them to feel that we're fighting for them. And it's, and I just, and I, and I'm disappointed when I hear Kathy say, we're not being heard. To me, that's terrible to feel that way. And all, all we are is a paycheck. And I don't want to be just a paycheck. And that doesn't feel good.
So I, I think for me is somehow to get the trust of your towns back. And maybe one of those things is actually promoting somehow what you do provide. Because I probably, 80% of our citizens don't know what you provide.
Because I was thinking on my next round, I would drag with a character's head, has the jaw, and say, okay, this is what he does, dragging me with me.
He popped his.
Right.
Yeah, and that wouldn't hurt because the towns so don't know what you do.
Yeah, you're right.
They don't. They, they just see you as somebody grabbing money. They have no idea what services you provide.
Until a year.
Right.
Well, you know, and, you know, one minute we're saying, I think you said 20, maybe it was 15, you know, we've got maybe 15 people that are retired, and you said, we're gonna buy two new cars. Like, well, if we're retiring 15 people, we don't need any new cars. You know, just like a math equation, but if you look at, you know...
Unfortunately, it doesn't work quite that. We still need to fill those doors, and people have known for sure.
Yes, you don't need two new cars. You still need to fill that car.
You don't know, you don't know what's going on in my town. I see it parked a lot at 2:00 in the morning. So I hope there's not a lot of... Because I, I, I need to go to work, but yes.
Yeah, I hope there's not a lot of action at 2:00 in the morning.
Right, right over at that, you know, car dealership, right there. Every night when I come home. They take very good care of my employees.
So I'm the guy to yell at anyways.
It's your brush, why should I comment?
Brush holder is not ready.
I attended, I think, most of the meetings that the advisory committees had, and just listened.
But, you know, it would, for your first year, let's do something spectacular. Seriously. Not, no planning, let's find a way to hit it out of the park for this.
And I've sat on that, on that committee for six or seven years myself. So you had to have a really good argument even 15 years ago to set, to get something in.
But not your chance. But not your chance.
You have a very good argument to get something out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, amen.
Yeah.
We would, I mean, it would, I think it would be for everyone. Give it you, your first year, watch out, I mean, look, poof, I did this.
I would be very happy your first year. People just knew about you and what you, what you do and all the services that are provided. Because when you try to explain what you're asking for in the budget, there's no way to justify it when they just don't know. They just, you can't justify it.
It's no relationships.
Yeah.
Relationship building is huge. That's how, I mean, you're a little bit kinder in my sense.
And this is not directly personal.
That's fine.
You know, she keeps saying that, you're too nervous.
He's been a slackener, he knows.
It's frustrating. I, it is what it is. Okay.
Other public comments? Future agenda ideas, after fun updates?
Well, we have, we, we had a question. I actually want to comment on that, because I was waiting for that, on the R book. I know at our previous meeting, we were worried about a timeline. We actually do have until December.
To complete.
To complete them. So we don't have to rush to do it. Although I'd like them all done, I don't think that it's, it's not as big a firework as we thought it was.
And it sounds like some of the issues aren't as big as they were with the front door up here. It sounds like it's, it's gonna be, yes.
I wouldn't count on anything being, but even funds authorized and...
We already have them. We have a landhold.
I wouldn't guarantee it. I wouldn't guarantee.
So we, we can, so, so we should still, I'll say, go to contract. One of the things, our problems were, we didn't know, was that we, we have, we'll say the generator. You're not gonna get a generator this time of year. So if we can, we were worried that we had to take installation of the generator, but now if we just go to contract and spend the generator money, we still have it spent. Or we just aren't gonna get it delivered in the timeframe that we were thinking.
By the way... Get it ordered.
Absolutely.
Under contract at this price, because those prices are just gonna start.
By the way, the fuel that the bigger generator uses may bleed you dry.
We're going with a smaller one, anyway. We're doing what, what's necessary to just... This is not gonna be a spa during an outage. It's gonna run the equipment, it's gonna run the pump for the bathroom, and we don't need to have every outlet in the building operational.
Oh, you're trying, you're doing what you're saying, told you to do?
Indeed.
I'm saying I have just enough to have the heat work.
Also, can I make jackets and...
We're two socks.
Has anybody worked on the power zone?
I do.
In here?
They did, actually. You know, we did.
Access payroll?
You're always close, too close.
Nope. The only problem they had was the bathroom.
Yeah.
We, we have power, power backup for the computers and whatnot, but they put the pump for the well, didn't work.
Really?
Mm-hmm. We are a very sophisticated community.
So get this.
I said, so forget the money, that wasn't it.
Our future agenda ideas include policy and job descriptions, meeting with Biden Chief Bean and Deputy Chief Randall, meet with interested residents, and creating an A-2K committee.
And I think we also...
What do you mean?
A-2K, the walking path.
Oh.
Because...
Plenty of money for that?
Right.
Where exactly?
It's, it's finishing the Brunswick bath.
The Andes going to...
It's gonna come one day or another.
Cross your fingers.
It, well, we're, we're, we've just been pretending.
The request is just to meet with some residents who are interested.
But I think we also, we started this a while ago, was a residency committee.
Yep.
We should, as we're forming that, we should, and I know, we, we talked about this, we, I'll call it the job fair. When we have openings on certain committees, we should educate our communities, what are our committees? What do they do? What are the openings? I know we're still looking for an alternate for the planning board. So I think we should really figure out what we have, share what the opportunity is, and help people get involved.
Suzanne, I hear you say this over and over and over. I think you just sort of start it up and see what the input...
I have no problem doing it, but I wasn't, I need your support to say it's a good idea.
Wait, well, it'll be a future agenda, and we're ready to vote. We also need to give back to the R D for howings concerning that it's almost, we haven't done that yet.
Did we put anything in the paper yet?
We did, we have.
We have not finalized or approved on our paper.
Well, I think we're, did we hear back from Emily? You know, I don't know if...
I know they've had some conversations, but I also suggested a number of edits to the document to bring clarity, and those haven't come back yet. And for the policy and job descriptions, is the April 3rd, is that, we're gonna vote on them on April 3rd? Because we've been talking about those.
I think we're waiting to get them back. We have to find out where they are with the attorney also.
We've gotta figure out how to speed up the attorney. We can't have things take four months to get back to us, especially things we've already voted on that I just want to talk about, so I know what the rules are.
That we've been working on for, before we were here.
More than a year at this point. I've seen minutes back, like the last March, where we divided up those.
Any slight board comments, you know, to...
I will not be at the meeting on the 20th. I'm sorry. I'm not really starting on vacation. But I'll miss you, permanent.
Any other?
I'm setting up this again.
Somebody want to make a mention to me?
I know it's gonna be a germ.
Second.
On my favor? He said...
Thank you very much for coming.
I appreciate it. Everybody, I just am exactly...
I what? This is super fun. It's like you're so...